Did you uncover cases which upon hindsight, the abuse, the neglect that seemed so obvious in hindsight was merely accepted by those who saw it?
Absolutely. I would like to start this segment with a story about a little boy named Aiden who is from Palm Bay who was beaten to death by his mother's boyfriend while she was at work. And in the course of the DCF investigation, which was the death review, and the police both identified six different witnesses who had seen some form of abuse against this little boy. And so you have to ask yourself the question, if just one of them had made the phone call, could the outcome have been different? And so one of the great challenges that the agency faces is having people participate, that this is a community problem and that we're all, it's incumbent upon all of us to make the phone call if we are seeing something that is inappropriate. And one of the issues that the agency faces is, and the community faces, is changing the culture of acceptance, that it's okay to pick up the phone. You can even do it anonymously, but it takes courage, I understand that. But if we're talking about reducing that number, that 477, or preventing further deaths, then you have to pick up the phone. In case after case, not only did you have cases like that, but we also had cases where after the death and during the investigation, the grandmother says, "Yeah, I saw it, but I didn't want the kid taken because I didn't want to lose my grandson or my granddaughter." And frankly, it's irresponsible because in the end, these were death reviews. That means you already lost your grandson or your granddaughter. So that's what sort of one of the great challenges of DCF. The other one is that they have to make sure in their own investigations that they are talking to everybody, that they are talking to as many neighbors and as many family members who can help put together the whole picture because they can't make a decision in a vacuum. They have to be able to say, "Oh, okay, Mom says she's not hitting him, but everybody else says she is." And that gives them the tools to further, you know, to continue the investigation.
There's a trio next to you, Otto, that are vigorously agreeing with you as you talk about this. Dr. Walter Lambert is the medical director of the University of Miami Child Protection Team. Doctor, thank you for joining us. Kurt Kelly is the CEO of Florida Coalition of Children, and Hillary Camber is the director of legal training for the Guardian Ad-Litem Program. Kurt and Hillary, thank you. Hillary, to the point of culture of acceptance, what's the right way to speak up?
Any way is the right way to speak up, as far as I'm concerned. Loudly and often to anyone who will listen. There isn't a magic way. We all know what's the right thing to do. And we do it in any way we can. We can speak to a teacher, they're mandated reporters. We can speak to a medical professional. We could pick up the phone and call the hotline. We could call the Guardian Ad-Litem Program. We could call, I mean, there are just more ways than I can list tonight.
Dr. Lambert, is it easy to spot, is it easy to spot an injury, an abuse versus an innocent injury?
I think we really have to, I want to say this straight out. There is no doubt in the last four or five years, there have been more reports to the hotline than we've had before. One of the problems with funding is if we have, we already hit around 100,000. I think yesterday we were at 99,000. So what does that mean? If we go the same way, we're at 300,000. Last year, we did like 265, we hit 150. There are many more reports to the hotline than there used to be. And one of the problems with funding is that means there's more reports for the protective investigators to go out, but unfortunately during these last years, reports went up, but funding went down. And then that's been a problem all along. Florida was, I think, the first state that says, our law says, any resident, any person who knows or has suspicion should report. And there are many, many reports from the community. I do agree, there are people who see stuff and don't report, there are family members who don't report, but that's not the norm. We have lots of reports. The problem is, we have lots of reports, and then we have to have good investigations.
You're certainly not discouraging reporting because there's lots of, the volume of reporting is large.
Even compared to, and I will say this, I call in reports, it is, you wait less now than you did 10 years ago, for sure. It's a faster system. There are prompts to tell you can fax and do things, but the truth of the matter is the system is, it's relatively responsive.
We do have an audience question about how to report that we'll get to in a moment, but as a medical professional doctor, what's the armchair ability to tell the difference between an abuse injury and an innocent one?
Well, I think, let's start, the law says if you suspect child maltreatment, you're supposed to call it in. In Florida, we're actually relatively unique, that we actually have within our statute a network of teams that cover every geographical area theoretically in Florida, the child protection teams. And in the series, I don't know if people who read them noted that there were many cases, as pointed out, the child protection team had said that it was child maltreatment, and then a decision was made afterwards to either ignore that or not. And in the funding issues, that's one of those that has not been addressed, right? There is not adequate funding for the child protection teams, there's not adequate funding for the services because the CPIs, the good CPIs, the majority of them rely on the child protection team. And one of the things that, I'm glad that Carol brought it up, was we heard a lot of safety, but the real word is risk, right? It's not only about safety, it's deciding which families are appropriate for family preservation. Lots of physical punishment that is clearly abusive and over the line, those people are appropriate. But children who have broken bones, children who have been burned, children who are living with big time drug addicts, domestic violence, and we know that many times that the mother, more often, but not always than not, is also a victim, but that child is a victim too. And the child's, I'm glad that interest goes first, the interest of the child goes first because that child has the right. And many times, by the way, in domestic violence, the removal of the child really helps the mother get into the right place. Like in substance abuse, we know that removal, appropriate removal with appropriate services really helps those people do the beginning of recovery. And recovery's a long time, I agree, but recovering and being clean for a while makes you a better parent even if you relapse.
Dr. Lambert, let's take the question from the audience. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. As a school social worker, I find it increasingly difficult to have a report actually taken by the reporting hotline. What is the plan for better report handling? Sometimes I've waited as long as 45 minutes to make a report via phone. In one case in which the children were later removed and the parents arrested, it took three calls. One from myself, one from a school counselor, and one from a police officer from the school system that went out to the home.
Kurt Kelly, I'd like you to address that from your perspective with the Florida Coalition of Children. Within the process, the years of experience that you have in the process, how do you answer that concern, that criticism about the delay?
Well, first of all, I'm not probably the person to answer that question directly because we actually work with, yeah, we would be talking to DCF and so forth. I think I want to go, I do think that question has to be answered because I do believe that if we encourage people to be alert, to be aware, to actually have a desire to be, and in any situation that you're seeing, as you said, there is no wrong time to look and make sure that we might, we might see a situation where we should respond, then we must, we must have a system that then it takes, has that intake. Now, I will, I'll be truthful, on, once the intake has come through and they work with the CPIs and they kind of go through the process and they are provided then for us to, for the community-based care organizations to get involved with that, with the provisions and so forth, that's when we get involved in that area. And, you know, but, but I will tell you, that, that's a critical component. I believe that the, the measure of a civilized society is probably how we take care of our most vulnerable, particularly children. And I, I'm fairly philosophical about this, you know, I, I went to, went to Florida State University, political science, studied all that philosophy and stuff. And it truly comes to bear when I've taken this position, to be able to understand that the things that the legislators are making, the decisions that Senator Sobel, my dear friend Eric Fresen, who we served together, the decisions that they're making actually get to support that securing the blessing of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, the protection of children. And so I, I truly believe that as a society, we, we ought to be pained, we ought to be deeply pained when we read these articles. I was sitting outside, pardon me, that's not answering directly a question, but I, I was sitting outside of a representative's office, getting ready to go in and talk about the legislation. I had gone through 144 pages, two nights in a row, line by line, every single word, looking and saying, "How is this going to protect children?" Not all the other stuff that might have been thrown in this omnibus bill. Personally, I believe we ought to be really focusing on the front end as much as we possibly could. But I believe that that's the, and as I was, as I was sitting out there in front of this, this representative, a tweet came out that the Miami Herald article was coming out, and I started reading a couple of the cases. I'd been up all night. And the representative came out and I had tears in my eyes and I said, "This is why we do what we do. Let's get it right." And I believe that's why the legislation this year is so critical. Now, I will come back, and I'm, you're going to ask me about the funding, I'll come back, I'm going to talk to you about that. Because I think if we get the words right on the paper, but not do the funding, we may have actually done some damage. And we need to make sure we do it the right way.
You're right, Kurt, I will ask you about the funding. I'll ask all of you about the funding. Otto, to the point though of the process of reporting, you hear the frustration from audience members about delays upon giving a report, or you hear the frustration from folks that have had false reports filed. What does your investigation inform you about the process of reporting suspected child abuse and neglect in the state of Florida?
I think the most important finding and the most important thing moving forward is when you make the phone call, the information that you are giving to them, it has to be full enough to give them enough to chase, so to speak. So you want to be able to say, if it's possible, the name and the address and the age, the suspected abuse, as full a description as that you can give, that you're comfortable with, so that they have something to chase. In some cases, it's screened out because there's just simply not enough information. I'm certainly not suggesting that in the case of this, this, this young lady because she's a teacher, but I am saying they have cases where there's just simply not enough information. So as much information as you can give, and you can do that anonymously to, to the hotline, then that gives them the tools to chase these cases.
I believe in the front row, we have a representative from the Broward Sheriff's Office, is that right? Jim Walker, second row. If we can bring the mic over to the second row for Mr. Walker. Jim Walker's the, with the BSO, the Administration for Child Protective Investigations. Mr. Walker, from your experiences in the process of the public being able to identify and report suspected child abuse and neglect, what are the best practices that you encounter in the field and practices that come up short?
I believe...
Go ahead and with the mic.
I believe for best practices...
I think we'll have to turn it on here in a moment. There you go, go ahead.
In Broward County, the Broward County School System has a designated child abuse designee in every school. And so therefore, every school has a mandated person within the school, each school, to talk to the teachers. The Broward County School Board has the Sheriff's Office once a year do a training of at least one representative of every school. In Broward County, we met at Broward College this past week, the week before we met at Florida's FAU. And I believe one of the things is within each community, we need to go out and have meetings like this, whether it be with college students, public school teachers, judiciary, explaining to them abuse and neglect reports. Broward County has 45% fewer children than Miami-Dade, but Broward County gets more abuse reports than Miami-Dade because we get out there and tell people to report the suspicion. I just believe that's a big, important thing. I also believe that Pete DeGree mentioned the new methodology and the, the intent of Florida gathering information, looking at the domains of the family functioning, the parenting and all that is so much more important than where we were, as Pete DeGree mentioned back in the eighties. So I believe that the use of the methodology and the enhancement of investigations is critical for us to get this under resolve.
Thank you, Jim. Jim Walker with the Broward Sheriff's Office. Hillary Camber with the Guardian Ad-Litem Program. Jim talks a lot about public awareness. You work with a crew of thousands of volunteers that come into the process, into the judicial process. What kind of training do they receive so that if they suspect subsequent cases of abuse and neglect, they can take the appropriate measures?
Well, I want to begin just very quickly by acknowledging the result on our program of the innocents lost. Our phones have been ringing off the hook. And that's because this community was outraged the way all the speakers have been and sought to become involved. People want to do something to help. And this program offers that unique experience for community members to be trained, and then along with a team of a best interest attorney and a social welfare supervisor, they make determinations about what's in the best interest and advocate for that in, in the courtroom.
You recently announced 9,000 volunteers statewide.
Over 9,000 volunteers statewide representing over 22,000 children.
And how many are needed?
Sorry?
How many are needed?
Many, many more. We're at about 84% statewide representation. And I just want to shout out a thank you to all the volunteers throughout the state who work tirelessly and who spend their own money to drive around. I mean, they don't get paid anything except in kisses and hugs. In terms of our training, we train our volunteers in how to investigate their children's cases, how to work with social welfare system, with lawyers, with judges. They are not the risk assessors.
Hi, Dr. Lambert. I'm Joyce Lark, previous investigator for the state of Florida after about 20 years, recruited to the school board, and I'm a teacher, social worker at the school. However, my question is, when did the policy change where a CPI could not reveal a child's, to a child's teacher, the malt treatments or the allegations? When they come to the school and we ask for the allegations, for instance, I'm in a school right now, and we have several cases that were my students, and I asked what's the problem. And the CPI had been working for the department three months, and she said that she was not able to give me that information. So I want to know, when did the policy change?
Could anybody on the panel answer that question? Could the DCF answer that at all? Let me ask a, a question regarding transparency. And Dr. Lambert, you've been in the system for a long, long... What is your assessment of the transparency of information in regards to suspected cases of neglect and abuse that requiring follow-up?
So I think it's pretty clear that the department, the protective investigator is supposed to make face-to-face contact with, well, let me just say a couple of things. Compared to other states, Florida is pretty good at having this concept that we're going to make kinds of cases, face-to-face contact with the victim child, alleged victim child in three hours or 24 hours. Some states use days, right? We do better at that. They're supposed to make contact with the reporter as one of their important reporters. I hear all the time, people, nobody ever got to me, but I, that is within the, the situation. And they do, if I'm correct, actually read the allegation narrative to the parents, right? So that part, they're open. The problem is sometimes if you read something, it's sort of obvious who is the reporter, right? And I think that sometimes makes people scared to perhaps report, especially family members or people in the communities. I don't think that mandated reporters had so, but I was not aware personally that the department had a policy that they don't share why they're there. Again, I don't work, I work very closely with the protective investigators, but I'm not aware of that personally. I don't know if, is that, I've never heard of that as a policy.
DCF says it's not aware of any policy change either. From the Guardian Ad-Litem Program, they're a different position in terms of access to information. But, but tell us, what does that experience of transparency inform the services that the GAL program can provide and perhaps practices that the system can learn from?
Absolutely, absolutely. So when our volunteer has access to services, information about the child and the child's needs, then they're going to go to court and advocate strenuously to ensure the child receives those needs. Similarly, when they have access to the parent's services and how well the parent is doing in those services or not, then they tell the judge that either additional services are required, please, or these services aren't working and maybe we need to think of a, a different goal for this case. So the information is critical. We couldn't do an investigation without it.
Hillary mentioned even, and Kurt Kelly, this gets to the idea of services, of community-based care organizations and service organizations. You've heard laid out the situation between preservation of family and the access to finances necessary to provide the services to assist those families. What is your recommendation to your former colleagues in Tallahassee as they're debating the economics of reform for child welfare?
It's a commitment to what is fundamental, as we believe, as society. Again, I, I really understand. I was there in 2007. I got elected in a special election, and the very first time I got to go to the legislature and got sworn in, that week, we, we were starting to cut. The economy had shifted, and all of a sudden, we had these incredible cuts that we were having to make just to get about the budget balance. Those were difficult times. 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010. I was out after 2010, but it went on to 2011 and 12. And we began to see all of these tremendous cuts. And I got to tell you guys, those are heart-wrenching decisions when you did that. For me and my role as a legislator, someone asked me this earlier today, I'll tell you, mine was to believe that I felt my primary responsibility as a member of the Florida House was to look at the safety and security of our citizens. Many of you remember the first prescription drug bill that got passed. I was the author of that, that got in, in 2009. One of the very first bills that did domestic violence, dealing with dating violence, got national press. I was the author of that bill. So there were many areas that we worked on in legislation that I felt was important. But just writing the words and not having a, a system that's in place to fund the services that are needed is frankly false hope.
Kurt, you heard the numbers legislators were talking about. You know the, the budgetary increase that the agency is in line for if the legislation passes the House and the Senate. We don't know the mix between boots on the ground with investigators with the agency and community services.
Right.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah, and I, let me say this, let's talk about boots on the ground, okay? Very critical. We've always been supportive of that. We think that's important, that you've got to get that right up front. We've always spoken toward that. We believe that, we thank the governor and his staff and DCF for supporting that. But that doesn't go far enough because quite frankly, when they go in there and they make the decision that they're going to take the child and have the child removed, they get it through the dependency system, or if they're going to try to provide services for the family, who's going to provide those services? Where are the resources for that? Right now, we already have a community-based care model that has been taxed because of all those cuts. We have actually had less money put into our system, and we have less money today than we had in 2007. And yet now, we're talking about having more and more children being brought into the system, rightly so. So we need to make sure there's a commitment. Let me tell you what we've done. At the Florida Coalition for Children, along with many of our providers, all of our providers and all of our, our community-based care organizations, we have said that we have a core service where the money, the money that we need that actually funds these services. And we've asked for 25.4. Yeah, I kind of sounded like a little preacher. I got up here and said, "25.4 in the core." But the truth is, it's what we need. We need to be able to have those services. Now, I'm going to tell you, there are a lot of other services, and if you've talked to some of the child advocates that are in here right now, and me talking about 25.4, they'll tell you, that's not enough. It's not. But it's where we agreed that we would go, and we've never moved off that number. So I'm going to go to the Senate, and I'm going to go to the House. You for what you're trying to do in policy, but we need 25.4 this year in this year's budget. And I'm, I'm hoping that we have some folks who get this and are championing this for us.
Kurt, if you get that money, what's the recommendation of the allocation of how that's spent? What are the priorities in terms of this community services between drug treatment services, domestic violence, mental health issues? What are the priorities?
Well, there's, there's, we've talked about the, the CPIs and trying to reduce their caseload, but the same arguments made for the CPIs should be made for our caseworkers. And a lot of times I hear us, yeah, thank you. A lot of times I hear people mention the words CPI and then say caseworker, and it's kind of all throw it in there. There's a big difference. We've got the CPI that's under DCF, and then you have the caseworkers. Our caseworkers are beginning at about $30,000 a year. It's tough to keep, it's tough to compete out there in the market for that. We need to raise their salaries. When we first started the community-based care model, it was a mess. The average caseworker was handling around 55 cases. 55 to one, ridiculous. Children were getting lost. We are now down to about 17 to 20. But the national norm should be between 12 and 15. We want to, we want to focus there. We think that's the right thing to do, and we have already put a plan that talks about doing that. And then the second thing we would do is take this and use this as an opportunity to provide those different services, working with drug, our drug rehab folks, working with our mental health organizations. And by the way, every community is different. So what you see here in Miami-Dade would be different than what you might see in Pensacola or Jacksonville. So their needs may be different. I don't want to, there's not a cookie cutter at this. But the funds drive this behavior. And everything that should come out of this meeting tonight is that if you're going to retool the child welfare language, and we're for that, we've been, we've been intimately involved. Thank you, Senator Sobel, you have been a real champion. And we've been intimately involved with them as they've gone through this. But I can tell you, we need to have those resources, both on the front end for the CPIs and for the services. And by the way, this is not a one-year commitment. It needs to be, we need to look at this thing for the next years, year. To actually changing our, and saving the lives of our children and changing our communities by going out there and, and putting these services in place.
There's another group of stakeholders that we haven't mentioned here, and it is foster parents and the role of foster parents in the system of protecting children. And we have a question from the audience regarding foster parents. Go ahead.
So as foster parents, we have the most involvement with the children and sometimes more involvement with the biological family than the actual caseworkers, ad-lem, et cetera. What can we do to be a party to the dependency court hearing?
Dr. Lambert, go ahead.
I happen, my wife and I, we were foster parents years and years ago, and I agree with you totally. You know the more day-to-day and the behavior, and, and your input is very important, especially about how the child is doing and how they're responding to the services, right? And I don't know the mechanism, but clearly you need to be heard in front of the court, in front of the foster care review to the Guardian because you do spend the day-to-day with the child.
Hillary, your folks are shoulder to shoulder in the courtroom.
Absolutely. And I, I believe that the foster parents are entitled to notice, they're certainly entitled to come to, they're not always, they have to ask for permission to speak, it's true. But I can't imagine, it's a pretty rare instance where that permission would, would be, wouldn't be anything but welcome. I know our program, it's critical, our relationships with foster parents, not only in the information provided about the child, but, but in the actual providing the service to the child. So the child is getting behavioral modification services or some kind of psychological treatment or medication. It's critical that we know how the child is responding to those services and as the foster parents there every day involved. I hear, I used to hear horror stories about children being transported to a psychiatrist's office for a mental health evaluation or psychiatric... office for a mental health evaluation or psychiatric examination by a transportation worker who never met the child before. How do you get a, you can't get a history, right, from a transporter? You get the history from the nine-year-old, and this is not okay. This is not, this is not the way we would take our children. So foster parent, it's the absolute critical piece in the puzzle.
Go ahead.
Let me weigh in on foster families for a second. You know, Hollywood has done such a disservice in a lot of respects. Every time you ever see anything about a foster family, they're bad, they're self-serving, they, they only do it for, whatever, whatever, whatever things you've heard about this, meet the foster families of today. Meet the families who absolutely love and give of themselves in a special way, that take children in at the middle of the night, and it's a huge imposition to the great American life, except they take these kids in, they make them their own, they love them to death, they take, that's the wrong word, they love them, and they, they take them, they take them wherever they need to. The compensation is never enough. I see Trudy Petrovich out here, who has, who has been here for years. Over 100 children, I don't even know how many you've had, over 100, how many? 300 children that she's, she gives of her life. This is the thing that we're lauding. And your community-based care organizations, I tell them, love on these folks. Love on them, care for them, because you help them, and we help our children find permanency out of this. By the way, Florida has done well in that area. In fact, doing so well is costing us quite a bit, but we've done well. We've gone from about 1,500 kids getting into permanency and adopted, adoption a year, and that's not one group doing, that's not just the CBC's doing it, that's a continuum of care, that's everybody involved. We're over 3,000 a year now, and that's a good thing. And so I will tell you, whatever we can do to support the foster families, we need more families that are going to foster. We need more people that are going to say, hey, I'm going to give of myself and take these children out of this harm's way in the middle of the night when they've been, when we can't, we can't keep them somewhere else, we're not going to warehouse them, we're going to get them into loving arms, and we need that to happen. We need more families to do that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Doctor.
I think one of the, I know we're coming to the end.
Yes.
I think one of the really important things is here, we focus very much on the children who died, making better risk assessments, so those children who could not have stayed at home should have gone into care, making sure those that go into care get good services, including that. But one of the big problems here, too, that there's money, this is all about money, and you know, I said it to you, legislature, where are you guys, you guys, before, this is on you guys. It's, you know, you know that we need more money, okay? It's policy, but this is money. This is having competent workers, a court system that works fast. It's not necessarily social workers, or I'm all for social workers, but then let's make sure the social work schools teach child maltreatment, because most child, and not, and not counseling. Anyway, but a big portion of what we need to do is start working on true prevention work. This is identifying at-risk families, providing those young children the appropriate place, and not only be always in the, the kids in the system, but how do we get people, not prevent them from coming into the system, because they should have come in, but rather not come in the system, and put the money in prevention. But because, I don't want to take away from interventions, but we need to do prevention work, too.
And that's exactly where I'd like to end the program, to hear from the four of you. And I'll ask you upon the long work that you and Carol did, you've heard a lot of responsibility in this room, in this town hall, certainly the comments that you've heard from the reporting of innocents lost. You've heard a community that is standing up and getting involved and taking responsibility. So for those of us who can hear you, your recommendation for this community so that innocence is found?
Don't forget. Don't let this be your last meeting. Don't let this be the last time that you discuss this series, that you discuss the 477, but much, much more importantly, that you forget, that you don't forget what we need to do to make sure there's not another 477.
Hillary, your thoughts?
This is the most disenfranchised group of people in the state of Florida. There's no fancy lobbyist in Tallahassee for these kids, and that's you. So we need to follow the senator's request. We need to scream and yell that the money that is required to give the services, to do the investigations on the front end, to give the services in the middle, is there. But we also need smart legislation. It's not just money. It is, money's a big piece, but smart legislation is a big part of it, too. I wanted to, just before we left, maybe close with a teeny positive legislative that I don't think cost a whole lot of money last year, was the normalcy bill, which speaks to the foster parents as well. And we have a bill now that really empowers foster parents to act as reasonable parents that they are, to allow our children in foster care to act like children, to go on sleepovers, to go on dates, to go to the prom, to go swimming with their friends, just the way we allow our children when we assess the situation and make it safe. And so that was a really smart bill that changed a lot of lives for the better, with, I think, a whole, not a whole lot of money involved. And so money, yes, and we need to march and scream for it, but we also need to really think smartly, and from the people on the ground, what is really wrong, what's really needs fixing, and think of all the creative ways we can to keep our kids safe.
Kurt Kelly, how can this community take more responsibility?
Long before I ever got into legislature, I served on a Marion County School Board. Before I ever did all of that, I had been involved in a community alliance. I was involved in our community alliance. The onus was upon me to get involved. Then certainly, I had a political life, and I was involved in, as a public servant, and I, you can certainly do that. But I think what you just said is, you put your finger on a very important thing. We need to unite. We need, I see the silos sometimes. We've got mental health silos and drug abuse silos, and we have, you know, our substance abuse out here and, you know, domestic violence. In a lot of the cases, the cohorts are very the same, and we can identify that. We need to come together. That's one of the things that I hope that I get to do as the new CEO of the Florida Coalition for Children, is to begin to bring these groups together, and we begin to look at how we can address this comprehensive picture. And then we need to move away from it's somebody's fault, always blaming, and let's begin to try to bring our, and get real good solutions. We've had a real eye-opening awakening. You cannot have read the articles, look at the pictures, and not recognize we've had a problem, we have a problem, but we don't have to live there. And so I would tell you that the grassroots concept, I'm with you, Senator, I'm a grassroots person. Join a community alliance. Get involved on a community-based care board. I got involved in one of those boards, found out how responsible we were and how accountable we were. Get involved in one of those. Get involved, is Dr. Glickman, is, do I see, is you Dr. Glickman? Glickman, from Kiwanis, correct? Yes, sir. I remember, I sat with you, sir. You came and talked to our Kiwanis there in Ocala. Here's a man that's trying to take a message worldwide about children. Engage the grassroots. Get active and get involved, and find out who your legislators are, talk with them. By the way, talk with them, don't talk at them, talk with them, and explain your concerns.
Dr. Lambert, I'll give you the last bit of doctorly advice for this community.
That's hard for me, because I think I'm, there's nothing in these series that I didn't know. There's a lot of people in this room who knew, maybe the specifics, right? And what I say is that we need to take these things and shove them in the face of the legislature. I'm very sorry, I believe that this is on the state of Florida, not only DCF, the state of Florida. This is something, it's not like we didn't know that we're drug problems, we've known about this for a while. This sort of was done very, very well, I've already, the writers, but the editing, because it was not sensational. This is an excellent tool for those social work schools, for anybody coming to the Guardian program, to the child protection teams. And I would like to quiz the legislature, know, what did they actually learn out of this? Did they actually read it before they vote? And then prevention.
And then prevention, the good doctor says. And special guests, thank you for all those questions. Action of this event was made possible by comments we received through the Public Insight Network, and we do hope that those of you who are not in that network will be considered to become a source for the Public Insight Network for WLRN Miami Herald News. The event will be available at miamiharold.com/live. Video portions will be found there as well. And I do want to remind you that this broadcast will be made available, edited live on Monday. We will have an edited discussion of this on Monday morning on WLRN, 91.3 FM, at 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM. The station is licensed to the Miami Dade Public School System. Thank you again. Thank you for the Miami Herald for hosting this event, and have a safe night.